Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to the October 21st, 2014 Post Falls City Council Meeting. Council met in a workshop at 5 o'clock, talking about the Evergreen Cemetery and adjourned to come to this meeting. Clerk will note that all council members are present. And ceremonies, announcements, appointments, and presentations. On the announcements, Thursday, October 23rd, Post Falls Chamber of Commerce Public Policy Forum on, at 11 o'clock at the Post Falls Chamber Office. I'll be joining Jamie Davis from Jobs Plus and the topic is the area's economic development. Post Falls Lions Haunted House, Friday, October 24th through the 31st. Fridays and Saturdays, 6:00 p.m. to midnight. Sunday through Thursday, 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. Seven dollars per person or six dollars with two cans of food for admission. Saturday, October 25th, is the Residential Fall Cleanup. Post Falls Sanitation will be doing a citywide pickup for one day only. Items must be placed at the street by 6:30 a.m. All items must be bagged, bundled, or in the garbage toter. Items must not exceed four feet in length and four feet in width. Furniture, tires, concrete, brick, or hazardous materials will not be picked up. Appliances will be picked up by appointment only, excuse me, excluding refrigerators and air conditioners. To schedule appliance pickup, call Post Falls Sanitation, (208) 457-1820. Saturday, October 25th, the Post Falls Lions Club Halloween Extravaganza. From 6:00 p.m. to midnight at the Greyhound Park. Thirty-five dollars per person includes dinner, magic show, live band, proceeds to help kids with cancer. On Monday, October 27th, the Camellan Park Boat Launch will be closed for the season at 8:00 a.m. And Friday, October 31st, Halloween Trick or Treat at City Hall from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. All treats are furnished by city employees. Tonight, we have a special award. The R O A D Scholar Award Presentation for John White from our own Street Department. And, and I'm sorry, I'm going to butcher the name. And Kit explained to me how to pronounce it. Odo Grande with LTAC. Did I do that all right?
Yeah, pretty good.
And please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor and Council for allowing me to take a few minutes of your time this evening. As you mentioned, part of LTAC is the T2 Center. And part of the, to give you a little background of the T2 Center, it offers training for local jurisdictions as well as technical assistance. So if you have any questions on MUTCD, ADA compliance, that's what we're here for. So we'd love to have those questions. Give us a call and, and we can help you with that. The second part is the training. The training program consists of training throughout the state. We, we offer it in the spring and the fall. And if people elect, they can sign up for certain, to reach certain levels of training. The one I'm presenting tonight here to John is the R O D Scholar. Once you reach R O D Scholar, you can go on to achieve the R O D Master. To give you an idea of what, what John has completed over the last, I believe it's been three years, he started in 2011 and completed just this spring. So he completed 11 courses. At the end of a lot of those courses, you have to complete an exam and receive at least an 80 percent. In those courses, we try to promote safety, professional development, and then maybe new techniques or refreshers on maintenance of transportation infrastructure that they work on within your city. So, anyway, through these 11 courses, we estimate that John committed 80 hours of classroom time. With that being said, I'd like to thank the City of Post Falls for committing so much time to allow their employee to come to that training. So, anyway, with that being said, I would like to present the R O D Scholar certificate to Mr. John White.
Thank you. (applause) Got a smile, John.
(laughing)
Well, thank you very much, John. Congratulations on behalf of myself and the council. And I maybe have an advantage, I've known John for many years and it couldn't, probably nobody more deserving, so congratulations for your efforts.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the council also for allowing me the time to take these classes.
You bet. Thank you, congratulations, John.
John, could we have you go and shake the hands of council? Just come along the front here.
Congratulations, John.
Good job. I understand he's retiring too.
No, he can't retire until he becomes a master.
(laughing) Thank you.
Thanks, Lydah.
Thanks, John.
Congratulations.
Of course, as typical with any of us, behind John is a fine wife. And Carol, thanks for joining us tonight. And there's their son, John, too. So thank you very much. Yeah, Carol deserves an applause for being married to John. (laughing) Thank you very much. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
There are none tonight, sir.
We'll address my issue under Mayor Comments, if that's right. Consent Calendar, I'm sorry, Declaration of Conflict. Lydah?
I'll recuse myself from item number H, Post Falls Landing Sidewalk Repair Professional Services Agreement.
Yep.
I represent that owner as a broker.
And I think when you vote, you can just vote aye because that'll be noted, that that's, you're standing on that one. Or nay, as the case may be. Any other declarations? Shelley, want to present the consent calendar, please?
Item A, minutes from the October 7th, 2014 meeting. Item B is minutes from the October 8th, 2014 joint meeting with Post Falls Urban Renewal. Item C is payables, September 30th through October 13th, 2014. Item D is Prairie Falls Spokane Street Development Agreement, Addendum Number Two. Item E is Prairie Falls Idaho Road Development Agreement, Addendum Number Two. Item F is Jaclyn Annexation Agreement. Item G is Seltice Way Congestion Mitigation State and Local Agreement. Item H is Post Falls Landing Sidewalk Repair Professional Services Agreement. And item I is Post Falls Transportation Master Plan Professional Services Agreement with David Evans and Associates.
Any questions, Shelley? That an entertaining motion?
I've moved to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion to second. Questions? Mr. Malloy, I know you have one.
Item H, kind of a dumb question probably, but I can't find it in the packet. Is that sidewalk to be repaired, is that adjacent to Spokane Street as part of the Spokane Street Improvement Project? Is that within the Landings property itself?
No.
It's actually internal to, to the project itself. So it's not a part of the Spokane Street. It was the recent improvements that they had completed under the previous developer. We, we owed him $50,000 in, in oversizing costs for a forest main that was extended through their project when they built the roadway. We ended up holding those dollars for warranty purposes. We now have some more in the items which showed up at the end of the warranty period. So that, so we're going to go in and actually replace them with cracked panels that, that had occurred internally within the subdivision.
So this is money that the previous developer set aside, we still have, and now we're repairing?
Yes.
Okay. I couldn't quite figure where the $50,000 was coming from, but, all right, thank you.
Alan?
I have a question, too, on item D and E. They're somewhat related. Part of the reason for the extension was because that Prairie Falls Golf Course has come under new owners, managers, correct?
That's, that's my understanding. This isn't an item that I'd move forward, but it's my understanding that they do have new ownership and they have requested the extension to the 2016 date.
Do we, do we know if they have any plans to do this development that was originally planned?
I haven't spoken with them. I know they came in and had to request, Hillary had.
I haven't seen anything formalized either, but I do know that they retain the services of Framis Motana to, to request this extension. So I think just allowing them the option to have it, I think that was one of the reasons that they have a new buyer is for the opportunity to keep the golf course, but also because there's some potential for development.
Okay. They just took over the golf course beginning of the year and I think they wanted to get in and see what was, what was going on, what was happening before.
I just know that when we, when I was on planning and zoning, we talked about this in length, was, you know, we, we approved these PUDs and then we, you know, there's got to be an end. It's either get the thing built or go back to the drawing board, rather than just continue it and continue it. That's why I was curious whether we were just continuing this until such time that...
It's a good point. There've been others that have come forth on that same scenario in different areas. So that's a good point to bear in mind.
I believe they're limited in their number of extensions, aren't they? Mr. Cafferty?
I defer to staff. I can't quote your code off the top of my head.
We don't have a formal number, but I think we've always kind of said, okay, after, I think number three, we're, you know, all right. And a lot of it is also if you look at the conditions. So the conditions haven't changed in that scenario. We don't have different city standards. So planning and engineering felt that it was appropriate, given that it is a brand-new owner as well. But I think, you know, if they came back and hadn't made any effort to move forward in another two years, then I think it would be appropriate to review it at that time.
If memory serves me right, that was something that we worked on in planning and zoning was that, once a PUD was approved on a piece of property, it was, it didn't have a life. So that was one of the things we came back and said, look, if we're going to approve a PUD, it's got to have some sort of a life. You know, whether it's three years with extensions, but up until that time, once a PUD was approved on a piece of property, it just stayed with it regardless of who owned it. So...
Well, I think, obviously, this is becoming an issue now with what's happened, happened on the economy.
Right.
So people put things on hold and they're bringing them back, asking for extensions. Okay? Any other questions? Clerk, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Hassan?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next item is public hearings. We have none. Next is unfinished business. We have none. Next item is citizen issues. This section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council regarding a city-related issue that is not on the agenda. You will have, we ask that if you step forward to give your name, please, and we will give you five minutes to talk.
I'll pass out to each one of you of what I've put in paper.
Can we accept that or do we have it turned over to the clerk?
My name is Bill William Armstrong.
Excuse me, sir. Since we didn't have it before, we'll have, instead of passing out, we'll have you give it to the clerk and then we'll make sure that we all get it after.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you.
No problem.
Go ahead.
My name is William Armstrong. I live on West 12th Street in Post Falls, have it for 22 years. I'm here on behalf of the residents because of the speed that is going on, on 12th Street right now. Back in the 90s, the street was repaved. There were supposed to be curves and sidewalks put in there, but the contract was torn up on that part of it, so they didn't get it. The children now are going to school and the traffic is up to 40, 50 miles an hour on that road, and it's a school zone. I have a radar gun. I know what I'm talking about, that I've radared these cars. Last Sunday, I saw a little girl just missed by this much, being run over at the corner chasing 12th. And I'm so adamate about this problem is because I lost a brother to the same situation and my mother 65 years ago, and I don't want to see a child or somebody else hurt. So if you'll look at my proposals, what I put here, I discussed it with the chief earlier tonight, and I told him what I wanted, and he said he would look it over and, and he said, there's some thought there, maybe we can do something about that.
Good.
And that's my, that's my whole concern, sir.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any thoughts or questions, Mr. Armstrong? Thank you, and we've got the information. Chief will be involved. We'll be back in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you for your concern.
You bet. Thanks for bringing that to us.
Anybody else wishing to speak? Ms. Flowers?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. I just have a question for you folks tonight. Since we just recently went through all the budget numbers and that, I would like to know who could give me the budget number on what it cost us, the citizens of Post Falls, the City of Post Falls, to actually water all these parks that we have here in town? I mean, I don't know whether there's an actual budget number for that, or whether they figure so much per acre. I don't know how it's figured. And I'm not sure exactly who to ask these days to get this number. And I'd appreciate any insight into it from the council.
That, that information should be available through the city. You can contact the City Hall, Jason Faulkner, our Finance Director, would have that information. But anytime you're not sure who to ask, contact City Hall, we'll get it to the right party.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Bob. One more.
Hello, my name's Brian Crabtree. I live up next to Bill on 12th Avenue there. And I come here to back him up and honor what he's doing here because there has been a lot of cars moving very fast down that street. The school being on one side and all the bus barns over there. My, my wife drives the school bus, and we have our grandkids come over quite often. And the cars, there's two playgrounds over there, plus the schools have football games over there. So there's a lot of little kids running around all the time on that street. And we need some more kind of control on that road, maybe a permanent radar sign, you know, that tells you your speed. Either that or put a few speed bumps in to remind people, because they seem to think it's a through affair through there, because there's no stop signs from Spokane Street to Chase. There's no stop signs there. So we need to do something to slow the traffic down through there. Even the bus drivers agree that it's too much. There's too many people speeding down through that area. So anything you guys can do would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you. As we said, we've got chief involved and he'll work with staff, we'll come up with a solution, be back in contact. Thank you for your testimony. Anybody else? Oh, I'm, excuse me, what? Carrie, do you have a question?
Well, keep walking, it's quick. My question is, what is the speed limit there? Is it 25 or is it less because there's a school?
The speed limit along there is 25 normally, but it is 20 miles an hour during the school, school time.
Yeah.
One of the issues that we have there is the street's not very well posted. There's one sign as you're traveling westbound off of Spokane Street, and my understanding is there isn't any signs as you're traveling eastbound. And so there's some things that we can do there to, to try and reduce this problem, and we will work on it.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, common sense doesn't prevail in school zones and, as it should, so we need to do, we need to do what we can do. So, sir.
My name's Chad Tipton, and I'm with Interstate Plastic over on Seltice, 3375.
Excuse, excuse me, Chad. We had, just had a discussion. We heard you were going to be here. We want to hear what you have to say. However, we did receive correspondence from your attorney today.
Okay.
And as a result, it is now passed us, because we can't make a decision. So your information, we, I've read the information that Mr. Malloy had forwarded on to us, but since we've got legal counsel involved now, we will have you and your attorney work with...
Myself, John Cafferty, and Hillary Anderson. Mr. Portman had suggested that, so we'll work towards...
And that was at the question, attorney. So we will address it. We will see what we can do to work on it. But since it's, attorneys are involved now, it really isn't appropriate for public comment at this point.
Okay.
So it's not that we don't want to hear you, but we just want to go through the right channels. But you will get the evaluation, the study, the response, so...
Before snow flies this winter, or...
I certainly hope so. We just got it today, so...
Actually, I'd say Mr. Cafferty will be in contact with your attorney within...
For the next day or so.
Okay.
But it might snow tonight, too, so I don't, I never guarantee.
And again, apologize, not trying to catch you off, but wanted to follow the proper channels. Anyone else? Thank you. New business, social media, who's, and use procedure, who's presenting on that?
I think that's me.
Thank you.
We have been using Facebook as one of our main sources of social media for several years now. The Police Department does an excellent job of telling their story through Facebook, and they have a number of followers. I had a presentation, I know Scott gave Rotary about two weeks ago, talking about, I think they had as many as 4,500 hits on one of their Facebook posts that they had. We had no policy, so it did not allow us, we had a post that was totally and completely outside of what our post was. So if a reader was to go on to that and post something that was an advertisement, let's say for a product they were selling, or maybe a negative comment in regards to a specific employee, we had no methodology behind how to handle that. So we started looking at putting together a policy. It also covers Twitter and, I'm going to forget what the extra names are under the social, Instagram, YouTube, and those type of other sources of social media. Carrie could probably give them better than I can. So we looked at putting together this policy. It was written by our media department, our attorney, and also the department heads, and our police department's media department also. And so we presented it to council so that we have a policy that allows us to handle who's going to post for our social media, what will be posted, and if we have commentary that is outside of that spectrum, how to handle that. And I can take any questions regarding the policy that's being presented.
I did go through the, every page of it, every word of it, and I, I think it covers everything really well, especially the part about being able to edit. You're not, you're not squashing free speech. But I think the city definitely needs to be in charge of people who take something sideways and inappropriate that you should be able to delete. I would ask the chief, do you do that? I know that you have 24/7, your department is able to post because you do have people on 24/7. Are they, are they able to, if they, if they can make a post on behalf of the Police Department, can they also delete an inappropriate comment in real time?
They can. We actually encourage them just to hide those comments so that we can take a look at them and they're not actually deleted. But if, yeah, if someone's using inappropriate language or, you know, something that's just not appropriate for the Facebook site, typically, we hide that, that information.
And we do the same on our side. It's just a hiding of the actual comment.
Doesn't happen very often, though, believe it or not. I mean, we have a lot of interaction on our Facebook site, and we don't get too much of that, but every now and then.
But I think, I think you did a good job with this policy procedure. I think it's very clear to anyone who uses social media what the intent is, so...
Thank you.
Any questions?
I did say that, I did the same thing. I read through it and compared it to what we have at our work, and it's very comparable. And, you know, it's just a sign of the times, something you have to have with social media out there, so...
If you have it, you've got to be able to control it somehow.
Yep.
One thing I would say on the social media is, as we go through projects, et cetera, we've asked staff to increase the communications, the updates, so people, if they do have questions, they can go to our Facebook page and find out exactly what's going on and what they can expect. So hopefully, it's a good source of information. And any questions, you can post it. And I know Kit responds very quickly if there's questions. I see questions posted all the time, and they get responses very quickly. So again, it's a sign of the times where people now just get on the computer and go to Facebook, so...
Mayor, something I would like to add, too. It is a great opportunity. I think most of us council members are also on social media. It has been an opportunity, if you happen to be online and there's a question, whether it's on the PD page or on the city's page, I know I have responded, if I have knowledge. It uses your real name, so it's not like I'm responding as a city of Post Falls. And I think, Lydah, you maybe have done that, too? You know, where you...
Normally, I just forward, just share the page. I don't make a comment.
Yeah. Or direct, or direct somebody, but so if we're doing that, we're doing that not, not as official representatives of the City of Post Falls. The public is quite aware it's my name on there, or Alan's name, or whomever. They know they're talking to, communicating with, you know, a city councillor on there. But anyways...
I guess the only question I would have, and I'm not sure what the policy said, but if I go in and respond on the city's Facebook page, is that me then representing the city or is that me as an individual? I may get angry and post something...
That kind of gets into a sticky area, so it's really at your own judgment. We can't, as, as council members and mayor, we can't tell you what to do on that regard.
I think we just need to use good, good sense of judgment.
It's not getting into a debate with someone.
Right.
It's if I happen to know the answer to the question and Kit actually wants to get a good night's sleep and have a day off, and I can answer it, I'll answer it or direct him.
I think we just need to all make, or be careful, because it's a, it's a slippery slope, so... But we'll learn as we go.
It is. And again, I want to, you know, repeat the fact that I think the Police Department has done an excellent job of turning Facebook into a communication with the citizens, and they do tell a story. They even do their, once in a while, their Twitter follower, which is a live following of a night, that they'll have officers and you can watch them actually making arrests. And Scott, I think, was directing traffic in one of those. And the city is looking at making theirs less of a business, cited it has been in the past, and doing the same thing, telling a story and getting that information out to citizens, so they are aware what's going on in projects that's going on throughout Post Falls.
I think it's great. We saw some recently on water shut offs, and it was ahead of time, but it put people on notice. So I think the more of that we can do for communication purposes, the better, so...
Thank you.
Lydah?
Are you looking for a motion?
There's a resolution down below, I believe, correct?
Yep.
So, any other questions, thoughts? Skip, does that help you in your Facebook?
(laughing)
Sorry.
All of this is, you know, way up there somewhere. I don't even worry about it.
Ordinances and resolutions.
Why?
We have one ordinance, two resolutions. First ordinance, Jaclyn Annexation.
Move to place the ordinance Jaclyn Annexation Number A-14-00 on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Hassan?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Hassan?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Hassan?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next, Administrator Staff Reports, the CAFER and PAFER.
Yes, we are pleased to announce that Jason has won the 16th year with the CAFER Award, and I think it's the fifth year with the PAFER Award through GFOA. And it's basically the highest recognition you can receive. About 3 and 1/2 percent of the cities in the United States get this award, and it allows the city with lenders and with also credit for those vendors to come in and look at that and see that we received the award and we meet the highest credibility. Also, it allows citizens to go out, especially with the PAFER, and see just a snapshot of what the financial reporting is. I believe Jason presented the PAFER when it was accepted by council a few months ago, and GFOA has awarded both of those awards again this year to the city. It is, I mean, it really is a prestigious award and deserves recognition.
For those of you in attendance, that's basically the equivalent of excellent in financial reporting. And again, 16 years in a row, Jason earned it, Shelley earned the first 15 of them. But...
And Jason was a little nervous about not receiving this award when we first hired him, so...
But it's...
He's feeling pretty good right now.
Congratulations for continuing, you know, the...
Move to approve the ordinance Jaclyn Annexation Number A14-00, and to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number, and that it be published by summary only.
Second. Motion second, further discussion? Please take the roll.
Henderson?
Aye.
Hisong?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Resolution dealing with social media operational and use procedure.
Move to approve the resolution, social media operational and use procedure.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Hisong?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next resolution dealing with the agreement for the federal aid highway project.
Move to approve the resolution, agreement for a federal aid highway project A012311, Seltis Way Congestion Mitigation, Cootney County, Key Number 12311.
Second. Motion second, further discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Hisong?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next item, administrative staff reports, the Caffer and Paffer.
Yes, we are pleased to announce that Jason has won the 16th year with the Caffer Award, and I think it's the fifth year with the Paffer Award through GFOA, and it's basically the highest recognition you can receive, about 3.5 percent of the cities in the United States get this award, and it allows the city with lenders and with also credit for those vendors to come in and look at that, and see that we received the award, and we meet the highest credibility. Also, it allows citizens to go out, especially with the Paffer, and see just a snapshot of what the financial reporting is. I believe Jason presented the Paffer when it was accepted by council a few months ago, and GFOA has awarded both of those awards again this year to the city. It is, I mean, it really is a prestigious award, and deserves recognition.
For those of you in attendance, that's basically the equivalent of excellent in financial reporting, and again, 16 years in a row, Jason earned it, Shelley earned the first 15 of them. But...
And Jason was a little nervous about not receiving this award when we first hired him, so.
But it's...
He's feeling pretty good right now.
Congratulations for continuing, you know, the financial transparency and the reporting that I think we've become known for, we all appreciate it very much, so, thank you very much.
And I believe only about four cities in the state of Idaho currently have received a Caffer, and only one other of the Paffer.
Congratulations, Jason.
Guys, set the bar awfully high, thank you very much.
Congrats, and we're really not shocked, but congrats.
Kind of expected, I mean. Council comments. Carrie?
What did occur to me while we were talking about social media, I think we had all wore GoPro cameras during public hearings and annexations, and give people the real-time view from up here, but anyways, that's not all my comment. Did want, you talked about a lot of events this weekend, there's one that's one of my favorite events, it happens twice a year at the Old Pleasant View School, and it's the cowboy breakfast, and it is this Saturday, they have it in May, and then they have it in October, Saturday, 8 to 11 at the Old Pleasant View School, and I think they're working on the foundation every year they have some, so go enjoy homemade biscuits and biscuit and gravy, and...
Thank you. Alan?
I would just, once again, like to thank those citizens who came forward with issues today, and those who come to our council meetings and participate in the process, so thank you.
Thank you. Mayor comments, as was on Facebook all over, we actually had a groundbreaking today.
Oh, yeah.
And we'll move forward with the Greens Ferry overpass, and I'll say, I said it today, and I'll say it now for people's information, we've had people post, why an overpass, we need a full interchange, what are you thinking? Well, just so everybody knows, we wanted a full interchange, unfortunately, the Federal Highway Administration's a little bit more powerful than we are, and they own that property, so it was designed with the opportunity and the ability to eventually make it a full interchange as a need arises and as approval is obtained, so I want to thank everybody who's involved, from the businessmen who started the discussion, according to Mayor Larkin, in 1996 was his first conversation on it, so, excuse me, so a very nice thing to start moving forward and help come to fruition. I've got one item, and Mr. Cafferty, I'm kind of going to defer this one to you, because I'm getting mixed feelings here. I talked with some of the council members, we all received an email right before the meeting, and it was from someone who is looking to open a new brewery in town, and their comment was that someone in staff is, must be a code enforcement officer or something, was out for the month, and they need to move it forward, and they want it open by the end of the month. But just as we're starting the meeting, I was told this information was just, the permit request was just received today.
Yes, and Mr. Hoag can speak.
Chief, you want to talk to us about that one?
I don't even know who the business is, but I heard that they submitted some paperwork this afternoon and wanted to get on the agenda. If the council wants to hear it, we'll sign off on it, but it's really up to you whether you want to put it on the agenda and be willing to hear that. Shannon is actually the one that signs off on new licenses, so we can process it as soon as you approve it.
Well, I don't think we can amend the agenda at this point.
Given the facts before us right now, this doesn't seem like an item that would be appropriate to amend the agenda, because it's not something that is emergent, that couldn't have been placed on the agenda had the...
Information has to be received on Friday before the meeting in order to be placed on the agenda, correct?
Well, and this...
Tuesday.
Tuesday, right.
So a week ahead. So in this case, it's, my thought is, we're not trying to be difficult, we will move it forward as fast as we possibly can, but information has to be submitted prior to the day of a council meeting for consideration.
It's a requirement of the open public meetings law that allows the public the opportunity to know what is going to be presented to the council, so.
So no action needs to be taken on this, but I had mentioned a couple of you, because I didn't think you'd probably seen the emails.
I have not seen the emails.
And it came in right before we went downstairs, so.
Right, and so, I mean, this has nothing to do with our officer actually being out, we have someone who fills in for him when he's out, and the paperwork was received this afternoon by that officer.
So again, I had mentioned to some of you, but that's why I just wanted to get it out, get legal opinion on it, and we'll let it go at that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We have some options if they want to do, apparently there's some kind of a grand opening they wanted to do, we can do a catering permit, we have some other options, so if they get ahold of us, we can accommodate them somehow.
Shannon, who received that information? Did you receive it today, Shen?
I didn't get it copied on the email, so if you could forward it to us, we can take care of it.
Can I ask the chief a question?
Yes.
Chief Robbie out of order, but I'm just curious what's going on at, was it 21st Street?
20th.
20th Street, the drug houses.
I was by there this afternoon before I came to council meeting, because I thought that question might come up.